All right, I'm gonna call this work session to order at 8:01. Steve, you got it up?
I got it up now, I think. So, we've got the maps, we've got the, uh, I, our historical links, you can either look at that or any of the previous maps, so I'll just pull that PowerPoint up again if it's gonna load this time. You need me to pull them from half looking up, otherwise I'm gonna sit over here and take some notes.
I don't know about the rest of you, but I think maybe if we just kinda start at the beginning and just go through and...
Check out schools as we go.
All right.
I think that, I think we have to get to a point where we're like, yep, that one's good, and that one's good, and then if we hit one where we need to discuss the plan, but yeah, I think that's the only way we're gonna have anything concrete for the next meeting.
All right, you got Alexander up?
Since we've gone back and forth on a couple of changes, if you could just, you kinda did it during the meeting, but do it for us again, tell us where we've landed.
Okay, so Alexander, we right-sized the building, I, this corner of this, where's my cursor? This right corner of Alexander is now assigned to New Hoover, and Lakridge, assigned to Longfellow. So, real comfortable with where we're at right now, we know that there's some future development coming in here, we also know the city's gonna punch the road through here, we're just waiting to do that, that's gonna change that pattern, probably some additional development out there, so we're pretty comfortable with that right now. In particular, we just decided to get the building down to a reasonable size, given the weighted resource allocation model, and the opportunity to move our modulars off campus here.
And as you were talking about that tonight, I was curious about the future development. Do we have more classrooms, not classrooms, more classes of kids in the younger grades? And Karen, you said that the makeup of the students is significantly different. Is there more quantity of the students, or is it just the percentage is different?
I don't, I don't think that there's a substantial difference, uh, keep in mind, what I'm doing in my head is, so, I don't have that chart handy, but I brought it for you, but, uh, our RAM model has smaller class sizes at the elementary, so what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to take cohort size in my head. I don't think there's a substantial difference between our upper and level, our lower level cohorts.
Okay, so it's just that the name...
Well, it is larger, like, if I'm looking at the RAM staffing, except for 2018, 19, the fall at Alexander, um, you have 67 kindergarteners, 64 first graders, 63 second graders, 63 third graders, 58 for 59 fifth, and 52 sixth.
Okay, so it is going up then, yeah.
Yeah, and remember, we got, uh, some of the kids, uh, some of our, uh, sixth graders kept stoned out, so there's a difference right now, what is it, about 10, when you go fifth grade to kindergarten?
Plus you would have to look at how many kids go voluntary transfer out, that will be coming back in.
Right. So, Alexander look good? All right. Borlaug? You might have to do the, um, be determined on Borlaug, I suggest we come back to it, have to figure out what we're doing before, because that'll be a downward endpoint.
But the change for this from...
Oh, sorry, so the change is, we added, we added Boston Way, and this southeast corner, and this northwest corner of Borlaug, northwest corner shifted to Lincoln, southeast corner, uh, northeast corner shifted to Lincoln, southeast corner shifted to Weber.
But no changes to Borlaug line since last week?
Correct. Corvus Central. So again, changes here, uh, we moved, uh, I'm never gonna get this, we moved the Hundred Acre Wood, uh, I'm just gonna call it that, we moved the Hundred Acre Wood in Iowa River Landing, uh, plus, uh, this northeast corner of Borlaug, um, or, I'm sorry, southeast corner of Corvus Central, we moved those to Lincoln, so this brown area here, um, shifted to Lincoln, um, makes us under the 100% capacity, which we were pleased with. Uh, I know in earlier iterations, we were looking at moving some other areas, um, out, uh, and some of the conversation about, uh, the students up here, I had a long conversation with Andy Gann about, uh, neighborhood integrity, and so, even though they're a little closer to capacity, and we'd really like to see it 94%, uh, he was strongly in favor of this map, uh, as opposed to some of the earlier iterations.
That little, uh, sliver triangle there that's going to Lincoln, right?
Yep.
Do you know how, how many kids are in there?
I don't...
I mean, I can kinda see the dots on the Lincoln map.
Remember, dots are families, so you don't always see the number of kids that are in there. Uh, I wanna say it's in the 25-ish range. Keep in mind that, uh, many of the students who are down there are actually part of our homeless transition process, um, and so they're not necessarily permanent residents, so that's south of Highway 6. So if you're driving along Highway 6, uh, if you wanna orient yourself geographically, you're passing Walgreens, now you're looking at the left side of the highway, something about the Lodge, some of the other places that are down there. So Sheltered House and some of our other, um, homeless, uh, support agencies will temporarily house students there, so even though they live there, they're not necessarily Corvus Central students, because through McKinney-Binto, they retain the right to stay at their home school. Most of our homeless kids, at least for the, uh, initial year, stay at their home school. Uh, so part of this, uh, part of our decision in this process and the dialogue with Principal Ginn over there, was, again, creating, uh, more dispersion for our homeless students, uh, which gives them a better integration opportunity, uh, in their new school, um, so we thought that was a positive, uh, in terms of next steps.
And your thought there, Sean, was to include it, so then you eliminated that little outline. Uh, I'm just trying to get my line around that particular area and what it was doing, really, not for Corvus numbers, or Corvus Central's numbers, but for Lincoln's numbers, and I guess if we don't really necessarily know that...
It's a small number of kids, so it doesn't have an enormous impact, um, on Lincoln's numbers. Should we come through with Corvus Central?
Yeah.
Garner, again, this looks like, just like it did last spring when we looked through it. Again, you look at this one, it's a relatively high-capacity number, but keep in mind, you look at our demographic profile, and we really have a very small area out here that's available for build-out, so we don't anticipate a large number of, of new students being added to the Garner attendance area in the near future.
That's good.
All right. Grant? Yeah, we've got some dialogue over the course of the last couple of meetings about Penn Meadows and the South Penn Neighborhood here, um, we had a version of this map on the last one, um, that moved Penn Meadows back to Penn, moved the South Penn Neighborhood to Grant, um, Phil and I were looking at those numbers last week, essentially it flip-flops it, so right now, you've got 16 and 10, you turn it around, and it takes it to 10 and 16. So those, uh, that was the, the two versions of it that we looked at.
Is it possible to have that data so someone looking at this could see it?
Yeah, it's back on, I remember where it goes.
Oh, so they gotta go back to the historic, okay, okay.
Yeah.
I would say I'd just make sure we've got it out there. I, I support leaving it like this for a couple of reasons. One, um, as we've kinda come through this process, we've sort of been derailed here and there, and started revisiting boundaries, just for the sake of revisiting boundaries that weren't necessarily part of our help, and I felt kinda weird about that, because, you know, another board landed on boundaries in 2016, and then, at some point, we're like, yeah, we need to kind of at least start from that, right? Well, this boundary was decided by us, less than a year ago, by input from families in that neighborhood saying they wanted to do that. Um, the, the flip-flop of numbers, I looked at, one is a delta 6.5% between Grant and Penn, and the other's a delta 6.6%, just one way or the other. The concern, which is a valid concern, that Penn will drop over time with future development. If you flip-flop them and you start Grant low, they're not going anywhere either, I mean, they're not, they're not gonna go up, they're probably not gonna drop either, because they're kinda landlocked to a certain degree, but I don't know that it will necessarily have an effect. I think what eventually will have the effect on those numbers is whatever future school ends up being built, and you're gonna end up, I don't know, the only school that has a fair, I guess I'd have to scoot back to what Van Allen's is, but the, on the far north end, Garner's the one that's gone up, and everything else is really low, so that, there's not a lot there that you can move around either, so in the short term, until we decide what other school are gonna open, I would support leaving that boundary alone and not changing it to Penn, but...
Yeah, Penn's gonna move way down in the future, I mean, it's gonna go down to 6, maybe a little bit.
I'm not, I'm not convinced of that, to be perfectly honest, because I don't think that, the people that would move into it would definitely be of a, you know, a high socioeconomic status, but I don't know that the numbers of people that would be getting into Penn will affect the percents that much, because Penn is gonna have a fair number of kids there already.
And see, and, you know, with the roundabouts and the traffic on that street, your safety isn't an issue.
I, I would agree with the feedback that we got early on, that trying to cross, uh, Front Street, going out to Mahaffey, is more dangerous to me than you crossing Penn over there on the eastern side of Front Street, where that is able to cut through the park. That's the area I know pretty well, I, I would feel safer crossing Penn myself than crossing Front Street. I'd say I, but it feels that way, so.
I think we had the discussion already, and we should honor what we, I mean, that's my thought, that we went through this whole process in January, February with community meetings, and that's really the plan, and so...
All right. Next is Hills. Um, again, we've got a small area on the north side here that becomes part of the Longfellow attendance area, it's a small number of students, um, and again, I, as I shared earlier, um, our initial plan was to reduce the size here, um, Hills staff adamant that they needed that operation efficiency, and they really wanted to be between 175 and 200, so this preserves that. So, overcrowded from a random standpoint, we know that, we've got a couple of Corvus out there right now, a couple modulars, but, uh, we also know that the plan is hopefully we start that dialogue with City Hills after the calendar year rolls around with the recognition that things may look different in the future.
So can you just walk me through it?
Yep.
There's a lot of little red lines, and there's some green, and there's pink, and I'm having a hard time figuring out...
Absolutely, so...
What was doing what?
This was, if you follow this, this would've been Hills, it would've come down here, and it would've gone around like this, so this area here, which is pink on this side and green on this side, would've become, whatever color that is, rose, dark pink, something, I don't know, I'm not so good with my colors, apologize for that, um, but it would've been this darker color that's part of Alexander, so Alexander would've annexed this piece right here, under the plan approved in the spring of 16. So, uh, what we did was we left this part here, this, inside this red thing, we left that with these kids up here, and this part of, of Hills down here, we took this part out here, and this is the airport, um, and then we moved that with Lakridge up to Longfellow.
All right. Just a lot of little red lines.
Yep, sorry, that's right. Any other questions on Hills? All right, Hoover. So, two big changes again with Hoover, remember, this part of Lemmy was already going to Hoover, we added, and this was early in our discussion, we added this part out here, we called it the Lemmy Sliver when we first started talking about it, if that rings a bell with you, so now we have all of these students that are in brown transitioning to New Hoover, so that makes a nice cohort of students that are making that transition from Lemmy, uh, to New Hoover, so they're traveling with lots of friends. This group down here, always part of that process back in 2015, 16, um, that's a group of Luca students, they're all transferring to New Hoover. This group up here that's in green, our current Longfellow students, as are this group over here, um, so you've got, again, some consistency there, uh, moving out to the New Hoover, so they're traveling with cohort of friends. Um, and then down here, we now have a group of students, back to your question about red lines, um, so this is a, a part of the Alexander attendance area, um, and that was gonna transition into Wood with the board-approved plan. Um, those students will now travel as an intact neighborhood to New Hoover. If you wanna think about it from a geographical standpoint, your markers, think the old Rose Oaks, um, and Bon Air, um, and the Saddle Brook Neighborhood, so that, from a neighborhood standpoint, that's the area you're looking at, and again, we'll move that whole intact neighborhood, uh, to New Hoover.
So it was, it's a whole neighborhood that was moving?
It was moving anyway, it was going to go from Alexander to Wood, now we're moving down instead of Alexander to Wood, they move Alexander to New Hoover. We like the numbers out there, just a reminder, about 73% capacity, plenty of room to grow right now, 418 with 575 capacity, so we feel pretty good about that.
And then just the change that I talked about, move that lineup to...
Yes, oh, sorry, um, whoops, no, that doesn't work when I do that. So, uh, Sean was talking about this space up here, so this is a brand-new subdivision, you go out and Google Maps? I'm sorry. You go out here, you, uh, you look at, uh, Google Maps, and you see there's a brand-new subdivision out there, Grinstone is the street that's out there, so what we'll do is we'll just take this and we'll lift it right up to New Hoover, or up to Herbert Hoover Highway. We have to stop talking before I get to the edges. Um, so we'll lift that up so that, uh, that entire subdivision then is included in there.
And as you're doing that, and I'm just curious, I know there's a lot of businesses in that corner that's right there that's cut out, um, to the, right there.
Yeah.
Is there any housing in there at all?
Uh, let's just take a quick peek, if we go down to Lemmy...
Uh, by Black, the Blackstone and that, on the other side of the street, there is.
You see this right here, it's kinda hard to see, because it's got the Lemmy right over it, Laurie, right there, that's where we've got some housing. So, this ma- map might be easier to see it, we'll just come right up here, come right over.
Because the street goes up...
So you're gonna, excuse, I have, go ahead.
I was just saying that where his line goes up, that's, that's where the street basically is.
We'll just shift this up to Herbert Hoover, yeah, that's where the street is. What happened was, when I went out, when we were looking at the map up there, um, I think what happened is the neighborhood voting that happened, back in 15, 16, that subdivision wasn't built out yet, so the people who did vote, voted, and we do the line around them, well, now the subdivision's grown out since then, and one of the things we really try hard not to do, is, and we've had this happen before, so we worked really hard, is not having a bus go into a subdivision to take the kids out of the back of the subdivision and send them to a different school, and the kids at the front end of the subdivision, and that happens occasionally when the subdivisions build out, when the lines have been drawn, so I think we can fix that so that that doesn't happen, because otherwise you'd have kids from the back end of the subdivision that would keep getting bussed out to go to New Hoover, and kids at the front end of that subdivision that now front on Herbert Hoover Highway would be going to Lemmy, so we can avoid it.
And that's a good thing. And I, you answered my question that, you know, we can't get anything from DURN without going through the $10,000 or $12,000, but we can identify students that are more than two miles away by the changes that we're making, correct?
Yes.
So could you, is it, I think that that's important information to, for us to have, is that with these changes, how many new students will be further than two miles away from their school? I will see if we can deep... And I know I've had this discussion with others too, that, you know, many times, many times I felt we should just take all of the identifiers away, other than major roads and things like that, and the numbers of students, and give it to some individual, separate individual, doesn't even know anything, and look and see what, because what we're doing with moving that up to Herbert Hoover, it makes us, it just makes a lot of sense, makes it a clean boundary. And with, if we had done nothing, and a future board comes with, they'll come along and say, well, why the hell they do that? Well, sometimes you look at some of the things in here that we're doing to keep neighborhoods intact from those things, we still go against that good thinking that we have major roads and things of that nature, and that's something that, uh, to me, concerns me, that, uh, is, is what you said over at Southeast, the short-term gain, uh, short-term pain and long-term gain, that type of a thing.
This isn't an optimal process, I can...
Right, right, no, no, I, I agree, and I, I hear...
Because to your point, you know, Adam and I have gone through and used the software to say, what would our attendance areas look like if every student went to the closest school to them? We've also done it where we've looked at and said, zone every student who lives within two mile of a school to a school, and then you can write the algorithm to say, and if they, uh, put, are within two miles of more than one school, send them to the closest school. Our attendance areas don't look like that. That would be wholesale change from an efficiency standpoint.
Sure.
Sometimes schools are too full when you do that, but there are, there are more efficient ways to assign the students than the process we're doing right now.
And you provided, and I think earlier, earlier on in the work session, you provided one that showed every school with zero to, zero to a half a mile, and, uh, zero to one mile, and, and then just reinforced the fact that Hoover is the easiest, who, Old Hoover is the easiest school in the district to fill.
So again, 72% here, so we're pretty comfortable with our growth opportunities.
Because there's a lot of growth on there that's not shown, like...
Yes, yep, we've got lots of planted subdivisions already going on. Horn? What would you like to do with Horn?
I think honestly, it really, well, at least for me, the discussion is where that bottom piece goes, and I think I kinda set at the table, I would prefer to keep it up. Horn would allow the folks that went to Weber, when they asked them to go to Weber, the option to stay at Weber. Some may choose to go to Horn, some may choose to go to Weber, it's an unknown, like Sean said, but I think just future planning, I just, I don't know, I feel like that piece fits better there.
We couldn't have that piece in Horn, Horn's stuff, or else it's going to be 51%, now it's going to 44, so it makes a significant difference.
And remember, that's one of those things, we heard that, I know you heard it, because I had some parents that forwarded emails that they sent to you, they also called me and talked to me about that, um, some of them are longtime, either residents in this section, residents in Weber, residents in Borlaug, and they, their, there's, they said their challenge was, can't you do a better job balancing numbers and demographics, and so when we went back to the drawing board and looked at that, that was really our intent, was to try to see, um, what we could do, uh, to get those better balanced. So you see on this one, actually, um, Horn's low SEF population goes down, uh, not up, um, and that moves it closer to, um, Borlaug and Weber, which are now just under 40%, this one at 44%, so that gap actually closed from about, I wanna say it was, uh, an over a 10% gap at one point on one of these versions, and it got down to eight, now it's on four.
I guess that's where, to go back to the short-term pain, long-term gain, in this case, it might be short-term pain for us, you know, as a district, but a long-term gain. If, if we think the demographics in that box are gonna stay the same over time, because you talk about, yeah, that area, add to Horn, it makes the numbers go down, but if they all stay at Weber, and the numbers aren't going down, it won't.
Not right away, no, I...
That's, that's what you'd have to, is it going to...
It will over time, and I would also remind you that when we did the Scanlon Farms grandfathering, we specified for students that were K5 this year. I would also recommend that if you do grandfathering for students here, you do students who are K5 this year. We know who those, uh, 48 kids are, right?
So you're saying not include preschoolers?
We did not include preschoolers for the others, because, let's think about this, if you grandfather the family, and you have a kindergartner, they might have a child in that family that's not born for 10 years.
Exactly.
That's a problem.
Could we put a length of time, like, I mean, say...
We haven't for others, and so if I was a Scanlon Farms family, I'd come back to you and say, why didn't you do that for us? So my argument, my, my argument from a, if you wanna make the change make a difference, is you grandfather the 48 kids that are on here, the six kids that are capstone kids, I, I'm not counting them, I grandfathered the 48 kids on here, but I would not recommend grandfathering families. I know that goes back to the impassioned Sean that we heard at the, uh, at the Listening Post on Thursday night, but, I mean, if, if the intent is a long-term transition, at some point in time, we gotta make the transition. So, that's my two cents on it, which I know will not be popular.
Well, it's, it, yeah, otherwise it's never ending, and then you say, and, and it gets me, because, you know, and, and in every scenario, you'll have a line where, you know, you're on the edge, and there's somebody on the other side, and it's, it's, uh...
And we've done this when we've done secondary schools, you know, when Liberty opened, you had to choose if your kid was a freshman sophomore, they were going to Liberty, and if you had a junior senior west, you either had to choose that split path or send them all to, to one, so...
Well, and it would be, I mean, I think there's a fairness thing, if we've already done that for Scanlon, then, I mean, they're gonna come back and say, why, and that would be a pretty hard answer, that we listen to these folks, but we're not gonna consider that for you.
It's just tough, because I, I just, you know, the, the folks that have three kids in school and one going next, I mean...
Yeah.
They already made one move.
Yeah.
And having kids in two schools is not...
No, more than 50% of your kid... You know, I mean, I, you could write a kind of a convoluted policy about that, because it does be, you know, if you have one kid there and three more coming, or if you have three there and one coming, I see that, but how convoluted do I get?
And, and, I mean, you could just simply say, through the year X, no more kindergarteners will be allowed, you know, I mean, basically, two years from now, I'd say, so like a, a three-year-old at this point. But, I mean, I hear what you're saying, we've set a precedent. Yeah, yeah, I know, we've, we've set a precedent.
But I also think, if you, if you have such a specific situation, that's why we have an appeal, and I would consider being, you know, generous to somebody who, you know, saying, uh, you know, if you have a val, you know, if you have some, and then I know it puts it on you guys' hands to make that decision, but, but, you know, we're talking about all these mitigating circumstances, and we can't, as a board, think of every one, and it's only the people who come and talk to us, so we're not even, because once we make the decision, then lots more people will come up with it, and now we're starting to go down that road, so I'd rather say, you know, that's, you guys' job, than look at mitigating circumstances, say, okay, in this case, we could make that decision, rather than us saying, trying to think of every little...
I just think that's hard when you get into mitigating circumstances.
I would agree.
Because everybody else is gonna feel like they have mitigating circumstances, and we already have seven, eight different types of exceptions there, so it just makes it extremely hard for us, because if families start to talk too, they're gonna start to make some comparisons, a lot do a lot for that one.
Yeah, it's kinda like transportation appeals, if you're at 1.8, 1.9 miles versus two.
Yeah, well, and in transportation, I would consider, for me, if our magnitude's not the distance, but maybe, let's get in the way, or geographic barrier or something that isn't, doesn't fall legally within a distance, but it's, okay, that makes sense. I'll ask a question of everybody, I mean, I have to answer it one by one, but like, internalize it. If you have a reasoning of why we're even addressing this area, I would say, was it because you're concerned about those kids who just moved, you know, last year, and potentially moving again, or are you concerned about the parents having a hard time? Because the future kids did not already have a move, right? I mean, so if, if that's your reason for saying we need to do something about those areas, because we didn't want the kids to have to move more than once, which is a very good reason, then you don't have to worry about future children. If it's bigger than that, you're worried about the whole family and how that works, well, that's the answer as to how you write your policy and your exception. We really tried to limit the exceptions to the best of our ability early on. I, I, I do feel for those families very acutely, but at the same time, I, a policy that has this convoluted, if then stuffed to it scared me, because it's hard to actually apply it, I think if we've got my, to how we did it with the Scanlon Farms stuff as, all right, this is, this is how we do a grandfather exception, that's how we do the grandfather exception.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's...
It's, it's tough for those families, I mean, there's no question around that, but, again, it's long-term.
I think I've been pretty clear, I guess in my communications with the families there, that I've said I'm for this part with the exception. with the exception of the Weber families that they choose to stay. But anybody new, starting, or new families would go to Horn, I'm pretty clear that's what I, my feeling is. As far as an exception, I think, even if we extend it to Scanlon Farms, if it's two thousand nineteen school year, if you're K through six and you're at, if you're, if you're going to start Weber kindergarten, then I think that's where the line should, should draw for me.
So this year's four-year-olds.
Going into kindergarten in nineteen, and then next year.
Yeah, that's how Scanlon's are for now.
I know, that's why I said, I would, I would extend that to Scanlon myself, but.
Because Scanlon's written currently.
And part of that could be, I don't know where their kids are for preschool, but if they're in preschool at Weber right now, then you're, you could use that as the justification for changing them. I would support that. I mean, I personally would allow the three-year-olds too, but I, I'm, yeah.
Does it, I have to think about the languages, and maybe it's not explicitly written for, well, I guess it wouldn't be that case for Scanlon, because it's currently, students currently there. So for this case, would it be entering kindergarten, whether you've got siblings or not? If you're a brainy person starting a new school, if you've never been to school?
I'm not for that, no, I, I think, my reasoning is that families made the choice to go by what the board wanted them to do. And I don't, I'm not comfortable then flipping it around on them to this close to where they did it. You know, I think giving them an opportunity, saying, you made the right choice according to the board at the time. And so I don't want to punish you for making the right choice by saying, well, now we want you to make another right choice and you're gonna go back to Horn. Because of the transition, so I, and I'm, I am less concerned about, I want to go to the same school as my family as that kid who had those, those transitions. Too many transitions in short-term time. You know, and the truth is that, you know, everybody's very emotionally attached to their school, and then they get emotionally attached to the next school. And, and we do have, I mean, you know, I think it's this fear of the unknown, what's this gonna be like? But, but those transitions isn't just a fear of the unknown, that's a real disruption in education to switch and then switch back. And so, and I think that's been the spirit of a lot of our conversations, is we want to limit those transitions for kids. And we do have to, I think, make, we're making a tough call on somebody. If we move it to the three, the two people, two-year-old kids are gonna be upset if we, so I think, you know, I don't know that I want to go back and revisit the Scanlon decision and say, next year's kindergarten. I mean, if we did it for here, then I think we should be consistent, but I'd be fine saying, you know, this year, if you are in kindergarten, you can go. And if not, then you made that, that choice, that Hobbsian choice that the speaker and I said, no, it's not a good choice.
At one point, we received an email stating that there could be legal action. Is there any legal action that could be taken against the district?
The board has the right to set a tenant series. No one, it's not a, choosing your school is not a property right. Well, freedom of public education is absolutely a property right, but there's no denial of fate through this process.
Well, and getting, and I, and I think I said this earlier, and hate, you know, what gets a lot of people upset is that we just keep poking the bear with, with boundaries. And I hate to quote Ron Popeil, but we need to set it and forget it when it comes to our boundaries. And when it's a new school, that's the only time you get back in and you start working on these things. And, you know, we're, we're doing, we've been working on this since, what, April? Every Tuesday, and the thing that, you know, as, as much as we're doing, still, you know, we're, we have three schools that are under seventy percent, by three point nine percent. That's all they're below seventy percent. We didn't really move the needle that much on the big ones. Agreed?
Yeah, fifteen percent on some of those is a big-
No, I, well, but I'm saying on the top, if you're looking at the top ones, it's, it's, it's three point nine on, on three schools that are under seventy percent.
Although, one, one thing on that, just as though we have reduced the overall students in those schools, I think the impact is bigger than that percent.
Okay. But what, and, and, and a lot of times, I think we, we are losing students who tiffen in, in other areas is because we just can't leave some of this stuff alone. People want stability in their life. And we're talking about the two most important decisions in someone's life. How their children are educated and the howling that they buy. And I think we, I hate to use Russian proverbs, but I'll use one. It's better than endless, it's a better horrible end than an endless horror. And we have got to just give the community some stability and just get these things to go along. And I, and I know we can keep going back and back and back, and, and I'm glad Steve brought that up, because I was trying to figure out how to bring up, how far back are we gonna go? Because it, 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 you have to get to some point, you say, this is, this is what the boundary is, move on. And I feel for, I feel for everybody too. You know, I, I want every, I want everybody to get everything they want, but then you get into voluntary transfer and all that to the point where there's so many permutations. I bought this house because my neighbor said that that's what they had. And there's gonna be people buying houses tomorrow. People bought a house today thinking that, oh, well, this is what the board's specifying, maybe that's, maybe I'm in on that.
So are you okay with this, and then doing something similar or a bit for Scanlon for the Weber?
Well, I, I hate, keep going around, but I guess if, if, if that, you know, that, that makes it equitable. Just for the purpose of getting to the other fifteen schools here. I, I just wanted to have kind of the, the long-term gain, like putting that area back to Horn. And it sounds like it would be a long-term gain for numbers eventually. So I guess I would support the boundary, at the very least, to put it back down.
Suppose I put a graph together for voluntary transfer, current K?
I, I would, personally, my opinion that it's the same thing, same, consistent with the Scanlon function.
Let's make a graph of that and get that ready for the twenty-seven. And I think it's important, and all of you have said this, and I will acknowledge that on the twenty-seven, I'm gonna use Phil's, Phil's quote Russian proverbs, I'm just gonna quote Phil, that somebody's gonna be on the other side of the line regardless of where we draw the line. And that's tough for whoever's on the other side of the line, and I think it's important that we acknowledge that. Because it doesn't matter where we draw it, somebody's gonna get caught. And that's gonna be really uncomfortable for them.
You know, I really think this process has been more about tweaking, tweaking the previous boundary decision and not wholesale changing it. And, and I think overall, that, you know, get a lot closer to our goals, you know, a lot closer to our goals.
In all three schools?
Yeah, right.
So it wasn't just a change for Horn, it wound up being positive directional change for Borlaug and Weber too.
And I think, Paul, you're right, neighborhood-wise, like, if you just were moving into this neighborhood, it's way easier getting to Horn. I mean, that's a much nicer block, it's a last option, it's not cross Horn and trick.
Right, and let's drop down here. By the way, hold on, back up, knowing that, knowing that, we skipped Borlaug, so then I wouldn't recommend making any changes to Borlaug. So it includes our Boston Way neighborhood coming down, northeast going to Lincoln, southeast going to Weber. And then we'll see that when we get to Weber, but that's a good geographical match for them. All right, let's see, we're at Horn, so then we're in New Hoover, now we're in Hoover, we're at Horn. Kirkwood. Right-sized building, feel really good about this?
Yeah.
Anita had good feedback on it. By the way, I'll tell you, Anita had the same feedback that I've heard from every school, it's lost population. We don't want to lose our kids. I said, Anita, you can't have your cake and eat it too. Your school's overcrowded, your classrooms are stuffed, we're using part of your library for learning space. Yeah, 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 I know. So just know that that's a universal sentiment, she wasn't alone in expressing that. The one thing that she did say was a consolation for in the end, is that the kids are moving his neighborhoods, so they're going with their friends.
Kirkwood, real quick, what, what does it look like next year as they go through their construction? Are they gonna-
It'll be easier to have- Phase, I talked to Dwayne about that, just because we'll have fewer kids there, so it makes it easier for us to phase through the building. He puts one of those phasing plans together, you know, do we have to move some kids outside? Well, now we're gonna have some space to do that, because we have portables on the east side of the campus, we can leave them there. So we pull kids out, put them in there, open some space up. So he says it's gonna be easier to do it, it'll be less stress on the kids.
Seventy-five kids, last, that's probably, yeah, with the Ram School, four classrooms on the kids.
Right, and if we leave the portables on campus, we're not in a position where we've got to try to move a six-plex onto the campus or something like that to displace them, we can do it inside the building and using the current portables.
And the portables are not gonna be in the way for the construction process, and I have a hard time picturing.
Yeah, they're on the east side.
They have to move.
Yeah, they're, they're on the, they're, we have to move them, but depending on the order that he now phases through the building, we can start on the west side of the building, was part of the conversation, so he hasn't gotten far enough into that to know it. So they'll have to be moved at some point, but the question is when? And his question is, when they have to be moved, could we be far enough through the building that they are just moved off campus? Right? So if you push everybody to the east and renovate the areas on the west, then flip them into the west as you push to the east and move the portables out.
And I just don't want them, don't do the garden now.
Right.
There's a garden.
Yes. We don't want to do that.
Lovely garden.
So-
I'm gonna find JP and chain that for him.
I'm gonna find the gardener, I have a garden, but she would, she would die in that garden before she-
So down here, we're in Lemmy, so remember, we've got this small section down here, which is Breckenridge, lots and lots of dots, because there's lots of families out there staying at Lemmy, made room for them by moving this Lemmy sliver out. Remember, we looked at New Hoover, nice thing is that they will move with a large group of students from Lemmy who are already going in New Hoover.
Did you say, one time, is that your neighborhood?
Yeah.
With your friends and your friends and-
And people like mailing things to your house or anything? No, no. I mean, there's only been one person that's been vocal and outspoken and would come to the street for me, but they'll be okay with that.
All right.
I, prior to this process, I had heard from another Lemmy parent that they were, just went into work, more kids from Lemmy moving to Hoover, so this will make-
There's about a hundred.
That parent that was already moving, that was moving, now they'll be moving.
Right now.
Be nice to those kids.
And then the house, the area to the north of where I live is all new development in the last couple of years, and it's a lot of young families with-
Young, young families.
Young kids, so we'll see my area age out and then we'll, you know.
Great. Lincoln, looks a bit like a quilt. So remember, we moved out our Forest View kids, that created a school that was too small. If you remember that, oh my goodness moment, a few Borges ago, when we looked at it and saw some hundred and fifty kids there. Anne Langithel, by the way, called me immediately when those maps were posted. And we've now got our Hundred Acre Wood, we've got our Iowa River Landing. This current part, just for reference for you as you think about it, this is the quarry, right? So we're coming across here, your firefighters memorial is here, so we're back behind there. Come down for a stab, then we grab this area out here. This is Hawkeye Housing, so it's across from the softball fields. Then we've got our Miller Archer neighborhood down here that has the attendance support bussing to it. Nice thing is that takes us up, which is, this is just coincidental, I went back and checked it several times, we have two hundred and seventeen kids there. We'll have two hundred and seventeen kids there. In terms of living, obviously substantial change in the demographics. In particular, both in our low SES kids and in our ELL population. I shared this with you at the board table, Anne's been pretty adamant that their staff has been working hard towards this goal for two years now. They feel prepared and ready to go, they're looking forward to it, they want me every time to make sure that I tell you that, so that you are hearing that at each meeting, but they've been pretty adamant about that.
And we kind of have, took that chunk over for future development. I'm curious what those numbers are gonna look like as far as, I'm gonna fly past it. I vaguely remember the initial drawings that came through for Lincoln that had a whole future expansion chunk on it. Would that ever become a reality or an accessory?
My, your Scanlon Farms elementary school might have an impact on it too, when you look at those attendance areas for Wickham and Corvoville Central and that north part of Lincoln there as you build that new school up. So we took that into consideration when we were looking at this. I talked to the realtors, they're not sure how many kids those Iowa River Landing apartments are gonna yield. They think there's gonna be a lot of grad students in there, a lot of med students in particular, they said. So there may not be, and young professionals, there may not be a lot of kids in there. That Hundred Acre Wood development, far more likely to have kids, but again, by the time that really builds out, we may be in that position where we've got the Scanlon Farms Elementary School coming in, and we'll be looking at those attendance areas up there to take care of that.
And you're talking about the apartments that are like across the street from the McDonald's there, where it's like, is it like there's a billion of them being built right there?
You wonder-
Those are student, actually, they're, they're being put up for the purpose of students.
Yeah, when I talk to the real- There's a mix in there.
The big building going up right now is for students.
There's a mix in there. They talked about the size of the apartments, and they said they're really not, and I don't, I can't remember the square footage you said, but they're not really family-sized apartments, they're more student-sized apartments, which I'm presuming means that they're significantly less square footage, less living space, smaller, small living areas, bedrooms, et cetera, which are really designed for that student market.
They're set up, this is a company that has done this in other big college towns, but where the student leases the room, not the apartment together. So they lease a room with four other friends, but they are responsible for their room instead of four friends. They're together on a deposit for an apartment. They're in an apartment together, but only leasing their people a room, so. So it's really like-
Targeted.
Really targeted to college students, yeah. Oh, it is, it's huge. And they're gonna have a workout center.
There's retail on the north side of the building on the main floor, some kind of retail, I'm not sure what it is. All right. Longfellow, again, the big change here is Lakewood. Lakewood right now is assigned to Twain, they were moving, they were moving to Alexander, we're now moving them to Longfellow. So again, like that east side of Alexander that was moving to Wood, and it's now moving to New Hoover. This is, again, is a group of students that were slated to move and are now moving to a different area.
And this, I'll just say, my worry here is to help the staff get the support that they need.
Yep.
That's a big, big change.
Amy and I have been talking about that with Kelly and the M team, the R and D team. All right. Lucas, just attendance area looks pretty similar with what the board approved in nineteen, or taken sixteen for nineteen twenty. Really, the only area that changes is this area down here, remember, it has no kids in it. So that was, we drew that up as we were looking for some contiguous space to make that change from the students that were, Alexander students that were now moving to New Hoover. to make that change from the students that were, Alexander students that were now moving to New Hoover. So, essentially the same kids. Really like the right sizing of Lucas. Significant reduction in their FRL numbers from one-hundred-and-fifty percent. Man...
I, I just wanted to comment because it's my, this is the one I brought up. And, you know, I, I, as we use main roads in other areas, we ignore main roads in others. And I know this, the neighborhoods had their preference and things, and we could easily do, and I don't like to do, I'm just putting this out there because I'm, I think this is something that in the future, people will come back and look and scratch their heads and say, okay, why didn't you just use Court Street and First Avenue to clean that up? Because no one's moved yet.
Well, I mean, is the concern Court, kids crossing Court Street? Because you have a lot of kids on Raven and Friendstrip and that are already crossed Court Street now to go to Lemmy and along that hole.
No, I'm saying if you, if you take, if you take the boundaries here and you make it up to Court and First Avenue and they go to Lucas, they don't have to cross either one. Follow me? I mean, that's...
I mean, I do, I...
That's, that's, that's my, that's my thing.
Yeah.
And, you know, it is a, it is a busy road and I remember, gosh, I forget his name. When I was taking my own daughter to school, that a City High student ran a red light and tried me up to school on time and almost hit some kids there and that, but that's, that's, that's my concern and I've said it.
I'm comfortable with it as it's presented, especially after being at PTO meeting and talking with the families there.
And I thought when we, yeah, when we started this thing, we had each other's backs, right? Was that presented as my...
Well, it was, it was your...
Well, I know, but I bet it's a board discussion.
Yes.
And do we single out everybody else when, when we have, have issues and say, well, that's Sean or JP's or Lori's or your decision?
I don't say it was a decision, I said it was your suggestion to move that area.
Well, do I, okay, then do we say it's their, their discussion?
Not gonna fight the decisions, Phil, so...
But I, I, I just had to, had to say that because I know my questions and emails are shared with everybody and all the time I hear about other discussions that go on and I don't get a transcript or, or follow-up on everything that was asked and everything that was said. I've said it.
Like to know anything that was said at the PTO meeting, I'd be more than happy to share it with you.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm saying about this is, this, these are my questions with staff.
I didn't have any of those questions.
With your meetings and others that they allude to, we're off the subject. We can go on to man, Steve, thanks.
Alright. The man includes our Forest View neighborhood, and I know that we had a contingent of parents that were there last week. And I was working with them through the interpreter, that was, if you weren't at that table, if you heard the applause erupt while we were over there at Southeast Junior High, those were the man parents. As the interpreter was going through that dialogue with them, they're very excited about, the Forest View parents are very excited about staying at man. I think Julie, I was talking to her today, she said she was gonna write you a note to just express her appreciation on that. We know that there are some plans to make some changes to that neighborhood and Julie shared with me when we were talking earlier today. It provides some stability for those families, so that was really appreciated. Still leaves them with a nice demographic profile, nice number of students for the building. Remember it's a little like Longfellow, so we're gonna see a little extra space there when we're done because we get that nice smooth configuration of rooms on the top two floors and not a bunch of hallways that masquerade as rooms kind of thing, so that's plus for us there.
One concern that was brought up at Hoover, just future thinking, is the Hoover families in that bottom right.
Over here?
Yeah, I had asked about bussing, paid-ride bussing because I knew that it wasn't a route, but...
Maybe just a quick reminder on paid-ride bussing. When students and their families sign up for paid-ride bussing before the deadline, Durham's goal is to book all of those students on a bus. They're really good at getting everyone who applies before the deadline on a bus. There are usually only a handful of kids who live in real outlier neighborhoods who are usually, or not usually, who are often on voluntary transfer to someplace that's not their home area that we can't get on a bus. But if they are in an attendance area going to a school and they're booking it, when they do it on time, they're really good at getting those kids on. Where we really struggle is the parents who come in in August and say, oh, can you get my kid on a bus? They struggle with that because they already have the routes established. So, we're working really hard, I know Amy's working really hard with the building principals to really reinforce with them, get your name on the list, because there's a high degree of likelihood we can get you matched.
Right, but what their concern was, there wasn't most likely a bus already going anywhere there because...
Even if there's not a bus already going there, Durham can build a route for it. So, because what they'll do is they'll look at it and say, especially, you know, in a neighborhood like this, that if they can get a critical mass of students, they'll put a bus on. We've got a few buses out there right now that run almost exclusively paid-ride. There are very few mandatory kids on those buses, in some cases I think we have one that has been done.
So surely they have a threshold that they would not, and they don't want to lose money on...
Yeah, I don't know what that number is, to be honest with you, I can't remember. It's lower than I thought it would be, frankly, and I thought it would be higher, it would be sixty, it wasn't, so...
Yeah, and the families that I directed them to talk to transportation, so, it was just their concern.
Alright. Penn, so again, no changes here from the nineteen twenty approved bound, or nineteen twenty, last spring, the seventeen eighteen approved boundary. Shimick, this is not G from the nineteen twenty boundary.
So regarding Penn and this vice of Lincoln as well. So, I'm just thinking of my own kid's school, in probably like April or something, we get a form that says, are you gonna move over the summer, have you moved this year, do you plan to come back next year? Could that form just go out to Lincoln in December?
So, if you think about it like a college commitment kind of thing, we've talked about, can we get commitment forms out there in advance of the deadlines? Because that will help us, so Amy, you wanna talk to that a little bit?
But even in van, like, in December, I mean, you can like do it now.
So I talked to Steve about just the amount of kiddos that would be, that we have, we think are gonna be in those grandfathered exception areas and really needing a clear picture for staffing purposes, given that we're gonna have need across the district. Buildings losing, big buildings gaining, and what would that look like? Of course, we're gonna have our living numbers as we roll it up. So what we've talked about and I've initially shared with principals is, and right now the impact is probably greatest on man at Lincoln, given the Scanlon Farms situation, can we go out and ask for at least a verbal commitment with where families are at? So, once we feel like we've got that list fairly well solidified, we can go about that task, we're trying to get a verbal commitment.
By the way, I just noticed an error on this map, after drawing these maps and drawing and drawing and drawing, this line should come across here. That's the quarry there, remember, we built with the Hundred Acre Wood? This line should come across here. I'll get that fixed. There aren't any kids there, stop by the quarry. Remember, we came across here, here's your Lincoln, Lincoln's green, we came across here, grabbed the Hundred Acre Wood.
Yeah.
So, I'll get that fixed. Sorry, as soon as I looked at it, I realized I was wrong. Alright, Shimick. This is your nineteen twenty version of it. Talked to Chris Passar, he'd prefer to be north of two-hundred, but as he said, I can live with this. Is there an area, not a lot of growth out there right now, so, there's not necessarily a, you know, and then of course, the problem with Shimick is it's, you move out into the corners of the district and it just makes it harder. So, you got the river running down here, there's just not a lot of room to expand that area unless you go south. And there aren't a lot of kids, I mean, you know, our offices are out here, there's not a lot of kids out here. Twain, really like the right sizing at Twain. It's a good number of kids for having the right cohort, grade level cohort. Fairly substantial reduction in our ELL and low SES populations. Get the kids out of the library, turn it back into a library, get art off the cart, turn it back into a room. Just really excited about what we think we can do for the culture of the building. Alright. Van Allen, again, we've got the Stables neighborhood down here. The question was asked earlier, I was going back through some emails and trying to look, and I, I think we've got quite a few kids that are in here that are paid-ride. So if indeed the kids down here are mandatory transport, they would simply be routed on the bus that picks up our paid-ride kids. So I don't think we're looking at an extra route there when I was going back through email, trying to figure that out. So, this moves our Stables neighborhood, it's probably the most vocal about wanting to stay at Van Allen. They were really concerned about the small number of kids that would be separated from the rest of the Van Allen group.
These dots are specifically families with current elementary students.
Correct.
And there may very well be other little dots that have secondary...
Oh, sure, yeah.
Students.
This is just your case...
That was, I think, the concern for the most part, the end of that whole area, which was the secondary feeding pattern.
Sure, yep.
More so than...
And in particular because Liberty's closed. Well, I did have a couple of those families that had contacted me that preferred to go to Wickham. I had a conversation with them, it wasn't Wickham that they wanted, it was West. And I did remind them that West is open to voluntary transfer and they're certainly welcome to apply.
Is there anybody who has voluntarily transferred, like a kindergartner into Wickham in anticipation that this was going to change for them?
I am not aware of it. I know I haven't been contacted by any parents, but I'm not really...
That is a good question though, because we've had some families opting into New Hoover and character placed in the Lincoln or man's population just so that they could be there for next year when they would not be there.
Yeah, yeah. Weber, there's a blow up right there, so, and like I said, this is where I got the contact from the old Weber family. They reminded me that this is old Weber, and then became Borlaug and now it's back to Weber. Good news is, from the not-too-e often standpoint, that was seven years ago, eight years ago, sorry, eight years ago, so, been a long time. As she said to me, anybody who's affected by the move to Borlaug is now at West. So, you're not, you're not moving kids who would have been there before. Interestingly, just, and again, we didn't know this the way after we read the numbers, but now the, the numbers at Weber and Borlaug are almost identical when you look at the demographic profile, and they're within four points of Horn, so that worked out really well. Wickham, we had the students that are down here. Remember, one of the iterations, we had a bunch of Corvus Central kids that we've moved up there, so, this keeps Holiday Road as our dividing line. Remember, we got our moments of special ed programs there, so it's beneficial for us to keep capacity a little bit lower just because a lot of those rooms have single-digit numbers of students in them.
So that's for sure, that matches us.
Yes, yeah.
And maybe, they may be the only one that's a for sure at a bus, right?
They don't get bussing right now, like I said, Anita's feedback was, it's a major attendance area issue right now. It doesn't get attendance support bussing, her response was, put it ship.
You'll probably have less from Corvus, but Lincoln, the diagonal?
Yeah, there will be some...
I think they're on a bus already though, I know they're less than two miles, but...
This group, I thought, was there not?
No, 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 he's referring to the south of Highway Six Corvus Central kids.
Oh.
Because I don't think they're crossing Highway Six, and it might be because some of them are homeless.
I think they're homeless kids in that group.
Yeah, that might be why they're on the bus. But to your question, Paul, yes, that I think might be a reason. Might also be because they're homeless, but...
Wood?
Although I don't know if they're two miles from Lincoln, now that I think about it, they might be less than two miles from Lincoln.
They might be.
It's not a walkable route though, because there are sidewalks.
But if they're still homeless...
Just up the hill to Lincoln, there's still a sidewalk, but...
If they're still McKinney-Vintell kids, they'll get transportation. Wood, again, had an opportunity to have a conversation with Joe. He was excited about getting new kids, but very apprehensive because they finally settled in, as he said, to the right-sized building, whether it's for lunch, library, recess. So he was a little apprehensive about getting the whole Rose Oaks-Bon Air neighborhood added to Wood. He's really comfortable with this attendance area.
Is it Bon Air that is being added?
It's going to New Hoover. Bon Air and, and Rose Oaks were supposed to move from Alexander to Wood.
Okay, yeah.
In the, in the version that was approved back in fifteen sixteen.
I'm just wondering, like this little, the little...
This area down here?
It's out at the bottom, what is that?
Yeah, this is, Saddlebrook is over here, so, I don't even remember what the name of the street is here because I always think about it as kind of the Saddlebrook area, but it's really not, it's the next step.
But it doesn't attach to the Saddlebrook at all.
There's a road right here, does one go through it? What's that?
It goes all the...
It does go all the way through, yeah, but, but they're really very separate neighborhoods.
But that was already, that, that was already approved.
Yeah, if you look at the red line, this Johnson earlier question, so if you took this red line and you just drew it over here, that was the area that was supposed to go to Alexander, so these families were already, ah, sorry, Wood. These Alexander families from fifteen sixteen were already planning on going to Wood. And keep in mind, if you remember, I know it was before you were on the board, but when we opened Alexander and there were a lot of concerns from people about, hey, I have to go past Wood to get to Alexander, these are the folks we're talking about, because they had to go up here, down Lakeside, and then down to Alexander. Because there's no way to get from here to here without going up here. So that was the group that actually came to the board meeting and complained that we literally have to go past Wood to get to Alexander. Now, part of the rationale for the board at that time to do that was, the city had talked about, they're gonna move, they're gonna punch the road through here and they just haven't gotten that done, so... Alright. From my notes, I'm comfortable knowing what I need to do with the maps and voluntary transfer for the twenty-seventh. Not a lot of changes, should happen pretty quick. Probably won't be able to sit down with Adam until Friday because of the school board's convention, but hopefully I send him a note while we're in the board meeting to try to reserve some time on Friday so we can punch out those maps. Really like to try to get a new deck ready and up and out to you. This Friday, worst-case scenario, next Monday. So if you've got the revised deck ready to go, I'll also shoot out the revised voluntary transfer language so you can see that too.
So, based on the fact that I don't, I don't think we made any changes, did we? From, from this?
Yeah, I'm looking at one little...
There's a few little things, there's that little piece that we're gonna move on the north side.
Oh, that's right, yeah, just up to Herbert Highway.
I did make that change to the Lincoln map, so I'll get that done.
Since it's not populated.
Yeah. The only change you probably can see to the numbers is there's a few kids on that north side of that, where that subdivision is along Herbert Hoover Highway, we might have a few dots up there, I've gotta go back and...
Was that the only change though from last week?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple, that one wrong line.
That little area in Lincoln, they had to move back to.
And there's no kids there, so, yeah, for the most part.
So, do you think the district average for low SES will probably be what we have here, is thirty-nine point three?
Yeah, I presume so, yeah. I'll give capacity numbers for eighteen, nineteen, forty, also.
And the number of students that are in excess of two miles?
Yes, I've got that too. I'm gonna try to run that, Phil, for all three scenarios. That might take, that might take a little longer, but if I can't get that out with the maps, I'll shoot the maps out first and then I'll get those numbers and shoot that out separately.
So Steve, just to be clear, on that Wood one?
Yeah.
As I look at the Google imagery, that Pinto Lane, which is the...
Pinto Lane. Pinto Lane.
The bottom one there that goes across that connects. Looks like there's an Eden Bridge kind of in the.
There is.
A backyard there.
Yeah, if you're out there, you can definitely tell. It is because those subdivisions were built at different times. Hauser built a lot of the units out there, so I actually went through that with him and he's kind of walked through the history of the construction with me.
The email note we got today from the person on Walnut Street, that was a change that was made in 2016, wasn't it?
It was, that is.
That's not something we've done. Yeah, I did too.
It is not a change from. It's in the, going apart of Twain, you move the line from kind of like Kirkland or whatever that street up to the.
It's this group right here.
Railroad tracks.
Okay.
So it's this corner right here.
Oh, sure, I see now, yeah.
You can see Walnut Lane is right here. All right, awesome, thank you. Maybe one last one for you here before you're done. I went through and updated the historical maps. I only share this with you because sometimes, so I try to put in that PowerPoint, right, so it's easy to follow through. If you really want to blow up a map, these are the ones that do that. The resolution stays better on here than it does when you're trying to blow up a slide. So I've referred parents here when they're trying to find a specific neighborhood. It's just a little bit easier as you're looking at these to see that, you know, here we are in Borlaug. You can see that it retains its resolution a little bit better than the PowerPoint does, so I just offer that to you as a reference if you want to see it. I went back all the way, so you got August 7th, 28th, September 11th, October 9th, 16th, 23rd, November 6th, November 13th. Thanks for doing that, that's helpful. Pretty good. All right.
I moved away a joint.
There we go, second.
Who, did it turn all in favor?
Aye.